My name is Dan Carney. It's once again my privilege to act as chairman for this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College, being held on Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at twelve thirty P. M. in the community room, the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, located at two-two-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to sit here and act upon the posted agenda. Just fading in the deliberations today will also be Vice Chairman Doug Dowd, Secretary Lila Morris, Dr. Robert Marlett, G. B. Bailey, Mary Beth Denny, Tom Vick. In arriving fashionably late will be Dr. Trev Dixon. I do call the meeting to order, and I would call upon Mr. Brent Baker. Would you provide us with an indication?
Be happy to, sir. Thank you. Please bow with me. Lord, we're so thankful to you for this time of year. We want to stop and give thanksgiving for the many blessings you have given our college, our community, us as individuals in this room, our students. Thank you. We thank you for our board. We pray you be with them as they deliberate, and that our students will finish strong this semester. In your name we pray. Amen.
The folks who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The second item on the agenda is public comment for any individuals that are not on the agenda. Is anyone signing it that doesn't?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Are you okay, Dave? Item number three is the president's report. President Todd Allen Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: In a New York City ceremony on October twentieth, Weatherford College's Frederick Sanders was inducted into the Steinway and Sons Teacher Hall of Fame. Mr. Sanders is here with us today. Would you please stand so that we can give you a round of applause? Congratulations to W.C. Trustee Tom Vick for recently being named a distinguished alumna of Austin College. In addition to serving as a W.C. trustee, Mr. Vick is a past president of the Texas Bar Association and a former mayor of the city of Weatherford. Please join me in giving Mr. Tom Vick a round of applause. The Coyotes volleyball team has yet again won both the conference championship and the Region Five championship. Next week, they are headed to Nashville for the national volleyball tournament. Go Coyotes! Employing notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Adam Parrish, an instructor in EMS, has resigned effective ten twenty-four twenty-five, and Sierra Cherry Holmes, an instructor at WCWC Cosmetology, has resigned effective ten fourteen twenty-five. We thank Adam and Sierra for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you very much, President Farmer. Item number four is a consent agenda and financial reports. Items A through G, as have been properly posted, appear there. Anyone on the board have any comment, question, observation about any of those? If I hear none, I'll call for a motion for approval of the consent agenda, items A through G.
Let's help move.
Your second? All in favor, please raise your hand. Here's the unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number five are the reports, again, from President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your workbook, you have the WCWC Academic and Student Services Update, as well as our annual Equity and Athletics Report. And moving to Agenda Item 5C, it is my distinct pleasure to honor and introduce the Alicia Armstrong Wiggs School of Nursing faculty. With us today, Ms. Lori Boyd, Dr. Ashley Brown, and Dr. Melanie Sharp. And I will tell you that you can look far and wide, and you will not find a better faculty or a better nursing program than what you can find here at Weatherford College. So thank you all for your hard work. The floor is yours.
I just want to begin by thanking you all for having us here today, and President Farmer for supporting us so much, as well as the board through the years. We're happy to speak today on behalf of nursing, which we firmly believe is probably one of the best parts of Weatherford College. I'll introduce myself first. I am Lori Boyd. I'm the Director of Vocational Nursing. And here we have Melanie Sharp. She's the Director of Associate Degree Nursing, and Dr. Ashley Brown, standing behind me, who is the Director of the Bachelor's Degree Program. Today, we're going to talk about the critical pathways that Weatherford College has for entry into the nursing profession. We have many. We start at the ground entry level as graduate for Licensed Vocational Nursing, and then you can move to Associate Degree Nursing, and on into the Bachelor's Degree Program. Specifically today, I'm going to speak about vocational nursing. I've been the Director of the Vocational Nursing since two thousand and sixteen. I'm privileged to work with some really high-achieving nurses that are wonderful faculty members. They articulate the Weatherford College vision and mission to their students. They are the epitome of the caring culture that President Farmer demands. More importantly, they are committed to turning out nurses who are exemplary and who foster a caring nature and who can stand up to the demanding rigor that nursing requires. And this is problematic across the nation right now, as statistically, fifty percent of new nurses are leaving the profession within the first year. This is staggering for all colleges and for everyone in this room, as healthcare is vital to all of us. The vocational nursing program is the ground-level entry licensure into the nursing profession. It's important because vocational nursing entry is perfect for many students who have no other access into the profession. They possibly have not been able to attain other college courses to make them competitive into the associate degree RN program. For instance, it's life-changing for someone who has a minimum wage job that is not leaving them fulfilled or helping them feel impactful in any way, for them to come to a twelve-month, rigorous, three-semester program and leave making an impactful difference on people's lives, hand-making thirty-five dollars an hour doing it. I think that is the definition of transformative education, and that's what we offer here. And because many of these students at this level arrive without previous college experience, they require a little bit more. They require more mentoring, they require help, and we give it to them. That's part of our caring and trusting culture that we believe in. Under the leadership of Dean Catherine Boswell, our team launched the first-ever Vocational Nursing Evening Program in two thousand and twenty-four in Texas. Our mission aligned well with the college's mission to create a pathway for students who had to work full-time or single parents that could not come to school Monday through Friday. So that truly has been life-changing as well. That pilot group will graduate in the spring, and I expect them to have outstanding NCLEX licensure pass rates. Some of the challenges to our program are also our opportunities, and they include the clinical placements for students all across Texas. And as a VN program, we anticipated this many years ago. We went three years ago to our leadership and said, "We need to build a smart hospital, and we do not want to reinvent the wheel." We have visited other smart hospitals. Some of us came from colleges that had smart hospitals. And through the Alicia Armstrong Wiggs donation and through other money allotted to our program from you, we were able to build a truly authentic lab skill space that is safe for students to practice in and even kill a patient in, and it'd be okay. It's a safe environment for them to learn with low-stakes outcomes. So that's been really changing the dynamics of our program for the evening program as well. Two of our faculty to meet this initiative will sit for the National Licensor this year for simulation, which just broadens our horizons for the future. We intend to max out, according to the Texas Board of Nursing Educational Guidelines, the level of simulated activities that our students can utilize for clinical. Not only do we already use that in our skills lab, but we want to be able to meet the Texas Board of Nursing initiatives that state, "How does your student know whether or not a patient has had a change in status?" They could go an entire semester and never see a patient change in status. But in a simulated activity, we can create that change in status and sit back and watch what they do. And it's very fun, and it's very informative as far as your students go. One of the other things that we have done to increase our partnerships with our clinical affiliates, which they are strong, but it is competitive to get these clinical sites, is we had the opportunity to help build three large-system LBN preceptor programs to help put LBNs into their own hospital workforces, and that created opportunity for us. That, along with the fact that my lead skills instructor, Deborah Weeks, hosted an international webinar that showcased the Weatherford College Simulation Lab, had over seven hundred attendees, and she showed how we are bridging the gap through simulation between the classroom and clinical, which is a Board of Nursing initiative. So I give them a lot of the credit for the success. In two thousand and twenty-four, the LBN pass rate was one hundred percent, which is exceptional. In two thousand and twenty-five, our unvalidated, however they are valid, scores are ninety-five point five percent, and I'm extremely proud of our team for that. And as our program grows, our goals will remain the same, and that is to keep the Weatherford College students here, to move them forward through this pathway to the ADN program, where I've worked collaboratively tirelessly with Melanie Sharp, the ADN Director, to move our students seamlessly from VN to RN, and it's working. Most of my instructors are LBN graduates from, they did not have the opportunity to move forward like this, and now that pathway is clear. So with that, I will mention one thing. I did not create this PowerPoint. Melanie Sharp did. It's wonderful. These are my vocational nursing students from two thousand and twenty-four. Three of the four are already RNs. They went through the RN program here. And I think, although that was not intentional, that speaks to the pathway. So Melanie Sharp, our Assistant Director, or Associate Director of Nursing. My assistant. It's nice to see everyone today. My name is Melanie Sharp. Ms. Lori introduced. Thank you for that wonderful introduction to nursing. So Associate Degree Nursing, as you can see here, I'll kind of go through the different options for all of the components of the pathway. So the LBN program, we have day and evening cohorts available on the Weatherford campus. The Associate Degree Nursing program is actually broken up into two separate tracks for cohort offerings. So an ADN, which is the traditional track, typically a four semester, that would be the ideal path, and then LBN to RN. So they already have their LBN, whether it's through Lori's program or they come in from another external LBN program, and they can do a transition to the Associate Degree Nursing program or get that degree. At the end of that Associate Degree Nursing, they do then sit for the NCLEX RN. So they do then sit for the RN exam. And then our last would be, last but not least, of course, is RN to BSN, which is Dr. Ashley Brown. He's going to speak to that in just a bit, and that's completely offered online. Both the ADN tracks are offered, day and evening cohorts on both campuses. And then most recently, we started LBN to RN. We started an evening cohort this last June, where we'll start our next one. We just accepted an additional cohort for this coming spring. So this will be our second round of that LBN to RN program offered in the evening time. We can honestly fill those evening programs all day long. There's a huge need for that. People, you know, lives today, people's lives are busy. They have children, they have mortgages, they need to work, and so nursing should never come off the table because life happens. We want to help facilitate that. And as we know, according to Dr. Farmer, Weatherford College changes lives. And so that's our goal, not only to change them through the students, but we also, our mission adhering to the community, we want to change a lot of the community, but also putting more nurses out there. So with ADN, I'm going to talk about registered nursing and licensure. I can give you some stats, kind of an analytical type of person, and I like to look at the stats, especially here in Texas. So for us, it is the next step, like I said, for the NCLEX. They take the RN licensure. Our pass rate currently is ninety-five point five eight percent. We will not have the current two thousand and twenty-five rates until just after the first of the year. There are five million registered nurses in the United States. Four point three of those are active, meaning outworking daily. In Texas, we have just about five, a little under five percent of that, just here in Texas alone. There's going to be a deficit by two thousand and thirty-six, which is not that far away, about eleven years from now, fifty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-one. As of the two thousand and twenty-four RN NEFS report, which is the state reporting system, and there's several reports we have to do every year, and per the two thousand and twenty-four results, we're just shy of sixty thousand nurses short. Currently, thirty-two point one percent of the nurses in Texas are ADNs. Fifty-six point eight percent hold a BSN, and only six point five percent hold a master's degree. All of our faculty must be master's prepared. And so you can see where the shortage comes in. We have some shortages across the state, across the nation, when it comes to education. So this is why it's so important for us to provide that venue and that outlet, not only for students, but to keep education, keep those numbers rolling. We need to be able to hire qualified, master's-prepared nurses. Schools have increased RN graduates in Texas, forty percent since two thousand and fifteen. That sounds like a wonderful number, but we're still just shy of sixty thousand short. That's only with an increase of ten schools. So two thousand and fifteen, there were a hundred and nineteen schools of nursing in Texas. Now there's a hundred and twenty-nine. So in nine years' time, we only went up by ten. And many of those are online programs and the sort. So what we do is very, very important for the state or at the state level as well. Here at Weatherford College, we are due to graduate in three weeks or less, I'm thinking about those numbers in my head, second week of December. Between the two campuses, we will graduate a hundred and fifty-one RNs. A hundred and fifty-one new graduates. So employment career graduations, as far as after graduation employment rates and career opportunities, we have nearly a hundred percent employment rate after graduation. Our grads go to work in healthcare facilities and the major conglomerates across DFW, but also across the state. Many actually do go on and move elsewhere and get jobs there. It's very, they're very marketable, over fifty to sixty different entities. RNs currently staff seventy-two point one percent of the physicians in hospitals. Those are RNs, whether it be ADN and/or BSN prepared. Only eighteen percent in the home health areas and ambulatory care areas, so there's a lot of growth out there that they need to fulfill those spots. So opportunities to stay close and go far, as we like to say in nursing at W.C. Two thousand and twenty-one, when I was the interim director, we won't go into that, this is my second, we were off on this by choice, I wanted to teach in the evening program. It had been a dream of mine to start an evening program, and Dean Boswell was instrumental in that support. Our longtime nursing director, Cheryl Livingston, retired, and I stepped into that role, and then really just wanted to continue with the evening program, so she, Dean Boswell, supported me. We started that evening program in two thousand and twenty-one, and we were one of the first in the area with just a cohort of twenty. We now have close to a hundred, so a quarter of my total enrollment is evening program, and the majority of our nursing tracks that we offer within ADN are fast track. So they start in the fall and they end in the fall. So in sixteen-ish months, as long as they stay on track, they are navigating that pathway to RN. And many of them have concurrently enrolled, as Ashley will talk about. But thanks to Dean Boswell, we were able to do that and still keep that going. One more thing I just wanted to sort of throw out as just another thing that we're doing and trying to do, so the state is increasingly funding to the Nursing Shortage Reduction Plan grant, NSRP. This time last year, the dean supported me and helped guide me to writing a grant, it's a THECB grant, in this Nursing Shortage Reduction, and we were awarded, that grant was awarded, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and some change. And it is, the mind, brainchild I'll say behind it was, it is geared towards Hispanic. The state wanted us to give a nod to that. Only twenty-one percent of our RNs in the state of Texas are Hispanic, and so it's a really untapped population. So those students that come in, they're already in the nursing program, they then have a full twelve-month faculty remediation specialist, who is also bilingual and, you know, understands some of the things going on as far as culturally at home or this or that, a lot of the hindrances within that population. And then the last two semesters, their tuition and fees are paid through the grant. So it is, according to the Director of Policy, Grant Policy, THECB, it is basically the first of its kind in the state of Texas, and we did get awarded that this past year. So I'm super excited about that and hoping that we can continue with additional funding from NSRP, these types of grants, to help get more equipment as well and other things. Great things happening. We appreciate your support, and I'll pass it off to Dr. Brown.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Dr. Ashley Brown. I'm the Program Director for the RN to BSN program here at Weatherford. I've been in this role since January this year, so still fairly new. Just want to highlight some things about our program. Currently, we have about a hundred and thirty students enrolled this fall. That represents about four hundred total seats in all of my courses. The RN to BSN program is a hundred percent online, so nine courses total, three semesters roughly we have set up for three courses a semester, so that RN can get their BSN within a year. One unique thing about Weatherford is they offer concurrent enrollment, which is something that was started in two thousand and twenty-two. Melanie and myself, Melanie and Dean Boswell, sort of looked at the criteria for admission back in May and made some changes because we noticed there were some gaps with our students, and some of these concurrent, concurrent, by concurrent enrollment, I mean, our ADN students, once they reach certain criteria, can apply to my program and begin to take online BSN courses towards their BSN while they're still doing their ADN. Obviously, this is for our high-performing students, so there's a certain set of criteria they have to meet. We did tweak that back in May and instituted that this fall. Our numbers stayed pretty much the same, and in fact, as of today, I looked this morning, it seems that our current inquiries and all the applications we have in process, we anticipate this upcoming spring semester is probably going to be our largest applicant pool. So, and that's concurrent students and traditional students. By traditional, I mean RN practicing out there. But our concurrent students is a unique opportunity, so we get a lot of interest from that current ADN students. And again, if they meet that criteria, we try to get them in there, and we try to keep everything here seamlessly for them to get their BSN. If they were to start, start to finish, BSN, they could get it in three years, which is very, very good. Most universities will do a BSN program four to four and a half, maybe five years, just because they don't have that every semester. And we start classes fall, summer in this program, so it's very unique opportunity, and it's grown rapidly. Too much of the growth, too, is marketing, myself, and I've got, I will say, too, back to the program, I've got four adjunct faculty that help me teach all the courses, and they're all doctor-prepared, so every single faculty in the BSN program is doctor-prepared, which is unique as well. But the marketing and continued outreach efforts, relationships with our hospital partners has gone really well the last several months. I've been out having meetings with CNOs. I've invited CNOs and CCOs to be a part of my advisory committee, so we have good representation there. So lots of good things in the work. It's encouraging. We were on a conference call with the advisory committee last weekend. One of the CNOs said, "I want Weatherford College students. They're the best. They're the most well-prepared, ready to hit the ground running." So those are things that rule you. And so like I said, much of the growth is those continued outreach efforts and partnerships with our hospitals. I will say, the next thing coming down that's really big right now is we have our reaccreditation survey in February. This is a five-year from the initial survey, and that's due May, and that'll be February seventeenth to the nineteenth. I'll post more details on that and some, obviously, some information to the board, but would really appreciate if you would be a part of that or be available, answer questions for the accreditation. So.
Thank you.
Point of personal observation, in the past year, I have unfortunately had the opportunity to be in more Karen County facilities, medical facilities than any time in my lifetime, and without doubt, I run into more doctors, administrators, the hospital leaders over there, who have nothing but complete compliment and choice words for your graduates. They, to a person, they all talk about the Weatherford College graduates. And I was just, it's just amazing to me, every time I talk to those people, that they have those kind of observations about your folks. I'm sure I'm not alone in that.
I've tried. I have the same experience, because I ask every time I'm in those facilities, "What about Weatherford College students?" And they always do the same thing.
Great.
You had last week on your, Ashley.
Speak up a little bit, please.
I was on Ashley's advisory meeting last week, and they're, she, HR, was she on the, she's the Education Director, sorry, she's very nice, but she's very open about the fact that they prefer Weatherford College, and they're a magnet hospital, so, you know, typically, they're looking for BSN from the go, but that shift has changed, and as long as they're enrolled in a BSN program, they give them a certain amount of time to complete, but they are actively looking for our graduates. My clinical coordinator just had a meeting just last week with Grandberry. They were recruiting us. Again, there's been a bit of time where we were not in there quite as much. So we've got a lot.
So we've got a lot of people that are really actually hunting our graduates down. How can we get them there for clinical? How can we, how can we do more with you? And we're eager and ready. If you want to speak to that as far as clinical placement, we struggle, but we're all hitting the streets, trying to do what we can and all for the love of the students and nursing and Weatherford College. That's what it's all about, end of the day.
Well, you folks have just done a tremendous job of elevating and bringing the name of Weatherford College, in my view, to the forefront in this entire area. And I can't thank you enough for the quality work that you're doing for us.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is the starting salary for an LBN now?
LBNs now work in hospitals again because hospitals have clarified that team nursing, LBN and RN working together, increase their quality scores. So this year, my graduates that left in September started at $35 an hour. In long-term care facilities, they can make more than that. It's life-changing. The students have to struggle throughout the program, but if we can get them across the finish line, that is a life-changing number for anyone.
So, and next, the second question. Why do you think so many are leaving the profession in that first group?
So, you know, the demands, I would say, from my personal experience, I can say, you know, COVID, we hate to use that word, but it just keeps coming back. But it's just like anything else historically in time. As many of them know, Lori and I both went through Katrina, and, you know, it was a similar feel. We lost a lot of nurses. But really, the median age for nursing right now, for the majority of the workforce, is 43. And so we have sort of to live.
Forty-three?
Forty-three years of age is the median age in Texas. You know, it's, when we hit that, if we close that gap of that shortage by 2036, that's in 11 years, that same individual nurse is going to then be in their mid-50s. So the cycle of things and population growth, especially here in our large metropolitan area where we are the fastest growing, you know, metropolitan area or metroplex, so to speak, even out here west, most of our graduates, a lot of them are going into Fort Worth and beyond to work because that's where the need is. But out here in our community, you know, we're still, we're struggling. We're struggling. But it's age. And I would say probably skill step too. You know, there's a level of dedication and commitment when you commit to something like nursing and healthcare. It's not just, as I tell my students, it's not just a J O B, right? There's a level of commitment that goes beyond that. And I think that's why we're so passionate because we need to pass that on to them. This is not just another career. It is a lifelong commitment to learning and perseverance and resilience. And, you know, whatever comes your way, whether it's COVID, whether it's a natural disaster of sorts, you're there. You're there. So that's hard, I think, in today's world. I think younger folks are, they are stepping up to the plate more and more, but you've got a lot of people that are retiring out as well. So it's a challenge. That's a great question.
One of the other things, I'm currently doing my doctoral project on that question. And it's, a lot of the statistics show that it's nursing burnout. And one of the guidelines from the Texas for Nursing since 2021 has been for nursing school curriculums to integrate burnout strategies and self-care into their programs so that when students graduate, get into the workforce, they are on the lookout, they know how to identify burnout in themselves and how to seek treatment because it's not just a, I'm going to take a day off or I'm going to take a shift off. It's, self-care is something that is quality time, sometimes speaking with a mental health professional. We don't always take care of ourselves the way that we take care of others. And so that has been an initiative. Self-care is now a competency that we have had to incorporate into our curriculum.
To that point, I was curious. I think we need to take time and prepare young people for the endurance contest that they're going to enter into, right? Life is an endurance contest, and I'm not sure, speaking as a parent, grandparent, that we've done a good job. But I think that's something, I'm glad that they're starting to consider that because it is something that I am concerned about as I look at Weatherford College and other, in school children in general, is endurance and perseverance, what to expect. So thank you.
I agree with that. One of the things that the Board of Nursing has kind of come back around to are different theories in nursing education. And one of them that they've come back to is Polk's Theory of Resilience. And we used to do all different types of caring theories, and those are important. But the Polk Theory of Resilience is one that is from 1997, I think, that has been readopted into nursing. That's a good point.
I believe there's another elephant in the room. And that's the administration of nursing facilities or medical facilities. So is there any training going on to prepare administrators to make an environment that is more satisfying to the professional nursing?
There are, yes, there are. Every healthcare facility is different, but they do have, speaking, being a more possibly myself, you didn't get a lot of that early on, but there are, there are a lot of changes coming. And it compounds because, you know, sicker population, the acuity is higher. People are sicker. There's more of them. The elevated upper generation used to be the big fear to tell us that nursing is going to be, that's what is going to cause our shortage to be even worse. There's a lot of different reasons for it, but there are programs that they put plays administrative.
Do we have such a program?
We do. It's our bachelor's degree in the Medical and Health Services Management Program. And so the current cohort is about 35 students right now. And so that's one of our other bachelor's offerings. And then it aligns into either an MBA program or a master's in health administration.
Well, speaking of leadership, initially, I complimented the students and the faculty. The kind of systemic excellence that we see here does not happen by accident. It's a result of dynamic leadership. And Dean Cathy Boswell is the one who has provided that dynamic leadership for decades. Governor Abbott appointed her to the State Board of Nursing, so thank you.
Melanie, what's the date of your graduation?
Ms. Leila, our graduation dates are, Wise County is going to have a separate one because of the size, 151 total graduates would be a lot to embark on as far as parking. I think we'd have to hire a detail or something. So Wise County will be on the 11th of December in Wise County at the First Baptist Church in Decatur. And then here, the main campus, including the evening programs, they will be December the 16th. And that will be at the Willow Park Baptist Church, which we've been before. That's the big one off the highway that can accommodate a lot of parking. Graduates, nursing graduates bring the whole neighborhood. We have learned, it's a real proud occasion, so they have a really high turnout. And we ain't having to make them only have a few, you know, six or eight guests when they work so hard, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. We appreciate you being there all the time.
I have one question. Are there potential, like qualified students that we're having to turn away from the program because we don't have no room?
That's a great question.
And if there are, how many is that?
I can give you an exact number from the fall. We had 160 available positions or spots. We had 50 on the day program at Wise, 30 on the evening, and the same on main campus, 50 and 30, so 160. We had 343 applications. We, now, not all of those were maybe as academically stellar. I'm not going to say that those were the top, top. But I would say if I had, if I had to really, I could pull my spreadsheet up, but just slinging an arrow at it, I would say probably around 260 were, 270 were top-notch. Five years ago, if I had the spots, they would have probably gotten in. We use a point system. We, you know, have tried, we're starting doing interviews for the LBN to RN. There's a different, that's a different mindset. They're transitioning from one scope of practice to another, and the interview is paramount, we feel. But right now, for the general traditional students.
That's about 80 to 100 students that would have been in the program, but.
And this is an issue, that's why I brought those stats up. You know, we've only gone up 10 schools of nursing in nine years in Texas. And you can, Dallas, Fort Worth, you can throw a stone and hit a nursing program. And so here, we're concentrated, but in the state of Texas, not so much. And get up in the panhandle, but it's still, we still are not going to close that gap. It's a difficult problem because we need space. That's the biggest thing. Lori spoke, she did an excellent introduction about, you know, our program, our space, the Sin Lab. It's, it's a wonderful addition. A lot of schools would, you know, just die to have something like that. And many schools have expanded tenfold on theirs. It's, we have a great space. We just need more of it to bring more students in. That's the problem. And then you're not just servicing nursing. You know, we're here for nursing. We have a whole nother health sciences sector of programs that needs financial support and, you know, to be able to bring in more students. We have accrediting bodies and of course, the Board of Nursing that puts limits on ratios. And again, that's why I threw out the number about the 6.5% is master's prepared. Faculty is hard to come by. You know, quality faculty that has the experiential qualifications, you know, and place them appropriately, whether it's classrooms or didactic setting or clinical. It can be a bit of a, of a jenga puzzle, so to speak, of sorts to figure out all of the dynamics and how to get it done. But you're right, the governor's Health Force Task Force is active right now since 2023, trying to close that gap and figure it out. But the last I've seen updates, it's, they haven't, they haven't come to a lot of general consensus as to what would work across the state. They've considered a centralized portal system for application where med students can also apply to nursing if they can't get into med school. Another shortage area like internal med, that's, you know, it just trickles down. So there's a lot of things on the table, but you're right, we're students going without opportunities.
Well, it's one thing, I mean, you have 60,000 to make up.
Yes.
And you have students that want to, you know, but you got to have the space to.
We do.
But it's all, if we had the space, if we provided the space, you're saying we really don't have the people, right?
We could, we could get them.
We'll figure it out.
We could figure that piece out.
I feel like that's part of our, as a board's job is to.
Everybody knows somebody. So whenever I hire somebody, I always say, who are you bringing with you? Who are you bringing with you? They'll be someone.
And I think too, it's the chicken or the egg problem.
Sure.
So if we can't get the ADNs, if we can't get the LBNs out, and then can't get the ADNs and Endure Bridge, and we can't get them to BSN, that is the path to the MSN. And because, so MSN stats are 55, 56 years old is the average age of a master's-prepared nursing educator. And I would say that's about right. I mean, looking at our numbers, not to date ourselves, but, you know, I would say, yeah. So it's, it's kind of a perpetual problem, but yes, space to get more baseline nurses out there and then bridge over to higher degrees. But again, yeah. The Board of Nursing does allow 50% simulation. We try to stay somewhere in the 25 and 30% range and the rest face-to-face. But we're struggling with clinical spots. We are.
Dr. Sharp, thank you so very much. Thank you. We really appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Item number six on the posted agenda is future agenda items and meetings. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be bringing to you the 2024-2025 financial audit as well as being, requesting approval for the 2026-2027 academic calendar.
Thank you, sir. And number seven, announcements, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir. Several activities to tell you about in the next month. We have our Night with Steinway Spiritio tonight at the Alkec Fine Arts Center. The Coyote Chase Race, our annual 5K and one-mile fundraising run that is this Saturday for the foundation. Multiple basketball games are coming up this month. You have the Employee Awards Dinner, December the 2nd. That's at Dove Ridge Vineyard. The WC Jazz Orchestra with their annual program called Hope for the Holidays. That will be December the 4th, also in the Alkec. The WC Choir has a concert. Christmas is a Feeling, December the 5th as well. And then finally, very popular program, Handels Messiah, presented by the Parker County Community Choir. That'll be coming up on December the 8th.
Thank you, Brent.
Yes, sir.
Now down to item number eight for closed session on real property and employee matters. We will retire into a closed session. Time now is 1:13 PM. Okay, the time now is 1:33 PM. We're still on November 13, 2025. We're back in session now. The, we're down to item number nine, consideration possible actions on real property. There are no action items under agenda item nine. Agenda item 10, consideration possible action with regard to employee matters. There are no action items today on that. That brings us to 11. Do I hear a motion to adjourn today?
I saw a move.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Would you all raise your hand? We are unanimously adjourned.